Welcome to the November eighteenth Board of Education meeting at the Montgomery Township Public Schools. May I please have a motion? Do you not?
That's good.
Okay, get that close. A motion to reconvene in executive session, please.
Open session.
Open, uh, yes, in public session. All in favor say aye. Need extensions?
Okay, motion cap, thank you.
Um, please rise. Before we get into our regular agenda, I would like to ask Board Member Will Kjernikin to please give an update on our MTDA negotiations.
So, good evening. The Board of Education is pleased to announce that a tentative agreement has been reached with Montgomery Township Educational Association for successor three-year contract. Both parties are now working collaboratively to finalize the terms of the agreement. We affirm the commitment, professionalism, and good faith efforts demonstrated throughout this process, and look forward to sharing additional details once the contracts are fully executed. In order to highlight that process, I would like the Board President, uh, I'm sorry, the Board Attorney to provide us the standard process.
Okay. Give me your ear. Okay, great, thank you. So, yes, the parties have reached a tentative agreement. They signed a memorandum of agreement setting forth all the essential terms. We have the salary guides that have been developed. The next step in the process is that, once we finalize all of the contract revisions, I know that we've drafted those contract revisions, you know, red line changes highlighted. Once the parties are fully in agreement with that, then the association will ratify that, the Board will vote on it. Once the Board votes on it, then that will be done. My understanding is, I think, once we get that done, I think the Board is committed to doing even a special meeting to make sure that we get that done as expeditiously as possible. So, all we need to hear back from is just to get confirmation that all of the contract language is fine, and then we'll move forward and hopefully resolve that once and for all.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Now, we will have our MTSD student representative report.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, I'm Arham. Before I want to start this report, I just want to reflect on National Native American Heritage Month, where it takes place all of November, and students and staff have been recognizing the rich histories, cultures, and contributions of Native American and Alaskan Native peoples through learning and reflection. Now, the start of the month saw several events, including daylight saving time ending, we got the extra hour ending on November second, clock shifted back one hour as we transitioned into the winter season. The NJGPA field test took place on November third and November fifth. High school juniors completed this field test with delayed opening schedules. And on the sixth seventh of November took place the teachers convention, and schools were closed for students, while staff attended statewide professional development sessions. On November tenth was the Powderpuff Game that took place at the Cougar Stadium with high student turnout and school spirit. Veterans Day was on November eleventh, and the school community acknowledged and honored the service and sacrifices of U.S. veterans. On November eleventh was a financial aid presentation, a virtual session that was held to guide students and families through FAFSA scholarships and financial planning for college. On November twelfth was the MHS PTSA meeting. And personally, my least favorite part, NJSLA field testing on November thirteenth and fourteenth. Students participated in spring assessment field testing, and students that didn't have to participate in this testing had delayed opening schedules. The fall activities and events are scheduled for the rest of the month. The MHS PTSA is hosting a brunch to celebrate and thank MHS staff. And the fall play, Peter and the Star Catcher, is on November twenty-first and November twenty-second. Performances will take place at the M-PAC, highlighting the talent of the MHS theater community and depicting the origin story of Peter Pan. Make sure to get your tickets, because all my friends are performing, they're really good. On November twenty-fourth to December first is winter sports beginning. Teams start their seasons as tryouts and practices begin, but some to take in note is swimming and diving begins earlier on November seventeenth. On November twenty-sixth is early dismissal leading into the holiday weekend. And I think an underrated holiday is Thanksgiving, in my opinion. And that's on November twenty-seventh, it's a day of reflection and gratitude observed across the community. And then, students enjoy a break with no assigned homework after Thanksgiving. Now, the more exciting part is the Cougar football team has made school history by advancing to the NJSIAA sectional final for the first time. The game took place on November fourteenth at Phillipsburg High School, and student interest has been strong, and the schools were organizing a student fan box to promote attendance and support. This milestone has significantly boosted school spirit and highlighted the value of community engagement in athletics. Also, students shared that Thanksgiving is often celebrated with not much discussion of its historical context. Providing accessible information, including indigenous perspectives, like Wampanoag history, may support a fuller understanding of the holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, we have our superintendent report.
Sorry about that. Good evening, everyone. I have a couple of repeats. So, the Montgomery High School football team had an historical season, making it to the state sectional final for the first time in the program's history, as we were just told. While it was not the outcome we were expecting or hoped for, we could not be proud of all of our athletes, our coaches, and supporters who helped make the journey possible. Our fall sports have come to an end, and we want to thank you for your continued support of our school community and our student athletes. Seeing so many students, staff, families, and community members in the stands reminds us of what group pride is all about. We hope to see many of you during the winter season cheering loudly and representing MHS with spirit and pride. UMS had sixty students compete in the American Math Competition this past month. The UMS Student Council hosted their first-ever Fall Fun Night, complete with an outdoor spooky movie and incredible food hosted by Machios. On November fourteenth, the entire school came together for its annual Respect Rally to kick off the school year and send positive messages about the importance of respect in our schools. This year at the rally, we had wonderful pleasure of having our first-ever dance performance. Dance is a new program at UMS and is bringing an exciting and enriching learning experience to the school. On Sunday, November ninth, the township hosted the Veterans Day ceremony, but LMS played an integral part in that. The sixth graders opened the event with a stunning solo rendition of the National Anthem, followed by a quartet from the choir who performed patriotic songs that were both harmonious and moving. Our fifth graders then shared heartfelt letters expressing what Veterans Day means to them, messages that deeply touched the audience and became the most memorable moment of the ceremony. During Red Ribbon Week, LMS students embraced the opportunity to learn and reflect on the importance of making healthy, responsible choices. Throughout morning meetings, students participated in engaging lessons and activities that reinforced this year's theme. Thanks to the generous support and donations from the PTO, students also enjoyed fundraises that added excitement and school spirit to the week-long learning. At Village, during the week of October twentieth to twenty-fourth, the students celebrated Digital Citizenship Week and learned about building healthy habits around technology use through videos presented on the Village Afternoon News. Topics included balancing technology time with other activities, protecting privacy, ways to identify and prevent cyberbullying, managing distractions, spotting fake news, and recording media messages. We are looking forward to seeing how students put this learning into practice so they can engage with technology in thoughtful and healthy ways. The Village and Orchard Technology Teachers created an online book of activities, videos, and discussions with questions, and discussion questions, as well as podcasts for families to start conversations about being a responsible citizen online. Across the district, we are proud of our students and their efforts for participating in the state's field testing for the new NJSLA Adaptive Test. Students were able to see how the math, reading, and writing made work for the spring implementation of NJSLA test. On behalf of the entire school district, I wish you a happy, healthy, and safe Thanksgiving filled with warmth, joy, and cherished moments with your loved ones. I would now like to introduce Ms. Fiona Borland to come up and present on our NJSLA spring results.
Hi, good evening. So, I'm here today to present on our spring assessments, and they are two different assessments that our students took in the spring. The first is our Dynamic Learning Maps, and that is a test taken by a population of our students that are measured against their own growth. And then, we are going to talk about the NJSLA, which is our New Jersey Student Learning Assessment that assesses our students against proficiency in the state standards in English Language Arts, Math, and Science. So, this is just our standard slide, for those of you who have seen this presentation before, that just talks about protecting our student privacy, and that when we do public presentations on student data, the state identifies that if you have a data point where there are less than ten students involved, you do not report out on that data, because it could be identifying features about a specific student. And so, any time that we are missing data, it's because our N size was less than ten. So, that takes us to our Dynamic Learning Maps. This is an alternative assessment in Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science for students with significant intellectual disabilities, and they are not compared to other students, they're not compared to the grade level proficiency, they are evaluated on their own progress and their own growth. Students in grades three through eight and grade eleven participate in ELA and Math. Students in grade five, eight, and eleven also participate in Science. Eligibility is determined by the child study team according to the individual's student's needs. The DLM was administered in the spring of 2025, and our N size per grade was less than ten, so I do not have any data to report out on this on the DLMs. The next administration will also be in the spring of 2026. So, that takes us into our NJSLA, our New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. And we will start with, you know, we cover English, Language Arts, and Mathematics. ELA goes through grades three through nine, and then the NJGPA takes place after that, so our tenth graders get a little break. In Math, we have grades three through eight, and then Algebra One, Geometry, and Algebra Two. And in Science, we test only in grades five, eight, and eleven. And the testing that is being reported on tonight was given in the spring of 2025. For the ELA and Math, so I'll go a little faster when we get to the Math one, there are five performance levels, so you go from not yet meeting grade level expectations through meeting and exceeding. Most of the data reported tonight will be a combination of students who either met or exceeded. So, when you are looking at proficiency, you are looking at the combination of those two numbers together, the fours and the fives. And these are spring results. So, this first slide compares us to the state, so the green is MTSD, and the blue is the statewide proficiency. As always, we far exceed the state, often by about thirty percent in ELA. This is our three-year comparison. I always find these slides interesting, because when we present them this way, which is how the data is given to us and how the state asks us to present them, we look at a comparison against, you know, the grade, the grade six, right? So, we're looking at grades six from twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. But what you have to remember is those are all different students, right? So, they are not the same children, and it's a different makeup of the class. So, what you really want to do is you want to start by looking at grade three, and you want to look at that first grade column, and you want to say, okay, in grade three in the year 2023, our third graders were fifty-four percent proficient. And then, we look at the yellow column in 2024 in grade four, and we say, okay, in 2024, we went to seventy-four. And then, in 2025, that same cohort of children is now the green that is in the seventy-eight. So, you really want to look at how did the cohort progress, as well as comparing how we're doing in each grade level. Grade level information helps me, as the Director of Curriculum, to look for where there might be a curricular weakness, where we might need a different resource. But when we look at the cohort, it's really how are children doing, and how are the individual needs of the students in that grade level being met? Okay, so this is just another way of looking at the, looking at the multiple grades or multiple years, but the difference here is it's broken down by achievement level. So, again, when you want to look at the achievement level, as I mentioned before, they're going to marry the fourth and fifth together to give you the change in four and five, or the change in meeting and exceeding. In order to follow a cohort in this chart, you're going to go in a diagonal, and so you're going to go from, you know, fourth grade in 2023 to fifth grade in 2024, and then follow the cohort into sixth grade. Now, I particularly point out in this map that we want to look at in the fourth level, you might see that, wait, they were forty-seven percent proficient in 2024, and then they dropped to thirty-three point one, but they didn't. If you jump over to column five, what you actually have is about a twenty percent increase in the number of students who have now reached exceeding expectations. So, you always want to follow the diagonal and then go across the chart to make sure that you are adding the four and five together. This is our slide that talks to us about our subgroups. Subgroup data is really important for us to look at, particularly in a district that is committed to universal design for learning, where we are committed to providing learning environments in which all students can learn. I do want to point out a couple of things to help us look at this slide. When you look at a slide, or when you look at a subgroup like male and female, you are going to have a large number of students, several thousands of students are in that subgroup, right? So, you've got several thousands of female students, several thousands of male students. And when you have that type of population, you're not going to see the large variance between one year to the next. But in some of the smaller subgroups, you're really looking at under a hundred kids, you could even be looking at under fifty students. And when you're looking at the smaller subgroups, the variant from here to here can be dependent on a different number of students that you have in the cohorts, you know, being different students. So, I'm just paying attention to the fact that, yes, we follow subgroup data, we want all of our students to be growing, but in the smaller subgroups, we really have to dig down into the individual learning needs of the students in that class. That's where we really have a commitment to our multi-tiered system of support. Every building has an MTSS team, and when students are not being successful, one of the first intervention is we can go to the MTSS team and work with them about what does a specific student need in order to be successful. So, you know, again, always data that we're looking at, but more difficult data to analyze in a whole chart like this. A couple of things to be really proud of when we're looking at our ELA data, that, again, we typically outperform the state by over thirty percent. We are looking at successful growth, particularly there was a nice jump from grade three to grade four, and we really are looking forward to a continued growth in grade three as we continue our implementation of the new phonics and wordwork curriculum in grades one through four. We also really want to point out that the state of New Jersey uses eighty percent as a threshold, with a goal of twenty, in 2032, for schools to be fully proficient. I'm not sure how we get to one hundred percent, but let's keep trying. But the eighty percent mark is a really big line, and we have our grades six, seven, eight, and nine all exceeding eighty percent. And that is just really something that our faculty should be proud of, something that U.S. Board members should be proud of, it is something to be celebrated. Yeah, absolutely, clap for yourselves. So, some things that we do to make sure that our students continue to grow, we have, at all of the schools, we have some improved data protocols. As you know, and you've probably all heard me talk about it before, we implemented a new assessment platform in reading and mathematics about four years ago, and we've really gotten to a place where our teachers, our child study teams, our MTSS, we are comfortable with the data, we feel like, you know, we see our students in the data, we can trust it. And so, we've really got a tighter set of data protocols. We also have some new data platforms that we do some training, we do some, we do training on, and professional development with our supervisors, our teachers, and our, again, study teams, in order to make sure that we can all look at the data in one place and really get a full picture of a child. I've spoken to ACI, and I know that it was read out in the ACI Minutes, that the state of New Jersey has a new early literacy initiative, in which we collected data on our youngest learners, grades kindergarten through grade three, on very targeted literacy skills. Those reports will be coming in the parent portal by the end of this month, and so that data will be used to help us identify students at risk and not meeting grade level targets as early on as kindergarten, first, and second grade. We've also done an upgrade and included additional materials to support our Tier Two students. Those are students who get academic support services in grades three through eight that are targeting explicit skill instruction, really working to fill gaps and not just support the learning that is happening in the classroom, but looking back and saying, why isn't the student being successful? The same thing happens in ELA lab supports for students in grades nine through twelve. We also have a real, we've always had a commitment to vertical articulation, but we've had several new administrative staff join us, and they are really working with their peers both up and down to make sure that we are doing articulation with themselves as administrators and setting up with our teachers. In the January Professional Development Day, there are plans for teachers at the transition point, so your second and third grade teachers, your fourth and fifth, and your eighth and ninth grade teachers to be meeting together and to be looking at making sure that they're using common language when we're teaching our students, that, you know, you put a kid in the ninth grade class, and they say, wait, I've never heard that, and it's just another way of saying how to write a thesis statement, but the eighth grade teacher didn't use the same language. So, really making sure that our articulation is tight, so students can be confident in what they learned the year before. And then, you'll see this on several slides, we are based on some code that was passed by the DOE about a year and a half ago. We are really working hard to make sure that teams of teachers are trained in sheltered English instruction. Those are strategies that help students who are multilanguage learners succeed in acquiring academic language in the classroom, but the same, the same strategies that help our multilingual learner help all of our learners, so the increase in the sheltered instruction training across, the sheltered English instruction training across the district will really be a benefit to all. Okay, moving on to math. Same five levels, so from not meeting expectations, partially approaching, and then to the combination of meeting and exceeding. When we look at the comparison between the math data and our state data, we are often almost fifty percent increased over the state data in some places. So, our math, our students continue to have a very robust math experience and demonstrate high levels of success across the district in all of their math contests. Once again, this is our three-year comparison, we'll talk through, walking from the grade to the goal to the green, but I want to point out grade eight. So, one might look at fifty-one percent and think that that is still, there's still room for improvement, and there is, but I will tell you that that is one of the highest I've been stalking all of the other school districts, it is probably what, it might even be the highest in the county, I can't say that yet, I'll tell you when I can stop all the other counties' presentations, but a twelve-point jump, so I do the math better, a thirteen-point jump between last year and this year, I'm squinting on this one. I want to really credit the eighth-grade math teachers who worked diligently to create classrooms that all students could learn in, they were targeted with their formative assessment. This was a purposeful-driven achievement to really make sure that our students in eighth grade are getting, are set up for the best success they can as they go into Algebra One as freshmen. Obviously, there is still room for growth, but that achievement is something that our eighth-grade teachers should be incredibly proud of, and I'm personally incredibly proud of the work that they did. Same, same exact slide that we're provided with, that we can map progress over three years at a level of proficiency. So, as I showed you before, when you want to track a cohort, you go down the diagonal and always make sure that you're adding your four and five together, to notice that something that looks like a drop might actually be a gain. So, we've got more subgroup population data here. Again, it is, I, just to repeat what I said, that it is very important when we look at the subgroup data to actually look at what is the makeup of each cohort. You know, in any year in the, when you think about the MLs, that's an easy one to get very concrete examples of, it depends on what year you might particularly have, you know, half of your MLs might be Level One, where in another year, only twenty percent of your MLs are Level One. And so, really looking at the, digging into the data to say who is in that column is how you really make a dent in the subgroups and help all of our students continue to grow. Some things that we are incredibly proud of is that we often exceed the state by nearly fifty percent. We do have some, we have significant improved growth among some of our subgroup populations. We have a consistent growth trend across our high school math courses, with Algebra Two having a ninety-seven percent proficiency, twelve percent improvement in grade eight, and improved performance of, improved performance across all of our Standards and Mind Middle School courses. So, when you really look at the cohorts from five, six, and seven, you're going to see, you see a continued line of a growth trend. Some things, though, that we continue to do to make sure that we are helping all of our students and closing that gap, again, the improved data protocols, really making sure that we are monitoring students who need additional classroom strategies, and that's really, that is taking place in grades one through twelve, really making sure that students' needs and specific skill sets are being targeted when we provide intervention. A little bit of a philosophical change, we are making sure that when students are provided with academic support services, that we are using a learning acceleration model, which closes gaps that are created for prerequisite skills that have not yet been mastered, and that really moves us away from just supporting what the teacher is teaching that day, but unpacking why the student isn't able to master what the teacher is teaching and looking for the prerequisite skills instead. Again, our sheltered English instruction is going to continue to support all students. Alma Reyes, our World Language and Multilanguage Supervisor, she has been working with the building principals to train teams of teachers who will receive multi-year professional development and be supportive over time, so that the students that have ML needs are placed with teachers that are highly trained. And again, those, those strategies benefit all students. We have Math Lab and Math Connections to support our students in grades nine through twelve, and we have Math Workshop and Flex for students in grades seven and eight. And last are our NJSLA science results. This is a, the science scores are only reported in a category of one through four, not five, so you simply have the meeting, the limited, and then we've got approaching and advanced, or proficient and advanced, sorry about that. When we take, we, we take this assessment only in grades five, eight, and eleven, and this is just where I want to say to you that the way that the science standards are written are very different than how your math and your ELA standards. So, the fifth grade test is actually testing your standards from grades three through five. Your eighth grade test is testing your sixth, seventh, and eighth grade standard band, and then your eleventh grade is testing really a wide variety of science content areas in eleventh grade. Going to the next slide. So, I just, you know, when we look at our student achievement, this is, you know, sometimes it feels like, well, wait, this isn't what we think of when we think of our students, and it really does have to do with some of the way that the testing is approached, is the testing and the standards are approached. And I'm going to use middle school, again, as the example that's really concrete. We are told that, you know, here are your middle school standards, grades six, seven, and eight, but there is not a mandate that sixth graders must learn Life Science, and that seventh graders must learn Physical Science, and that eighth graders must learn Environmental Science, which one did I leave out? Okay, so, what happens is that we, as a district, we make a choice, we support our students, we write our curriculum, and then depending on the year, there is a different collection of questions, and so we're just remembering that our students are actually being tested on three years of content, not just the content of that standard, or, sorry, not just the content of that grade level. And that is why you probably see a pretty big difference when we look at the proficiency level between science and between ELA and Math, it's because the students, they are being tested against the standards to that specific grade level, as opposed to a multiband here. It doesn't mean that we're not still always looking to improve, and we'll talk about that in another slide. Once again, we have our subgroup populations to look at, and we definitely see some good growth across some of our subgroups and continued, continued improvement, which is what we're always looking for, oh, I just lost myself, there we go, and so things to be very, very proud of. As always, we do continue to outperform the state, we really were very happy to see an improvement in grade eight, and there had, we had last year supported the purchase of a significant amount of new curricular resources for the middle school, and we are beginning to see that pay off. We really, we have seen growth in six student subgroups, and we've also been able to add additional science opportunity for our ninth graders. This year, we are going to continue to explore some of the Open SIAG units that are created by, you know, by both the state of New Jersey and Next Generation Science Standards, and to look to align our fourth and fifth grade into that sixth, seventh, and eighth grade progression to kind of spiral more of the skills, so that we can continue to see the growth and mastery of the multiple growth and mastery of the multiple content in the bands. We also implemented, last year, we started with the pilot of the science benchmarks. So Linkit is our data warehouse as well as can provide us with benchmark tests along the way. This year, we will be using the Linkit science benchmarks in grades six, seven, and eight, and that's going to give our teachers following year a lot of very specific data about what has and has not yet been mastered. We are also looking at the Linkit benchmarks do go down in science to the younger grades, and we will be looking at them to decide if we think that they are appropriate for our village and maybe our village students. Continued commitment to teacher and leader professional learning. Science is not what science was 25 years ago. It's a lot of application, critical thinking, problem solving, and so we want to make sure that our teachers have everything that they need in order to meet the standards. And we also are a little, in a little bit of a pause and a little bit of a hold because the state of New Jersey says new standards are coming. So we don't want to, you don't want to do a whole overhaul of everything when we have an expectation that, we are hearing that they might give us a line, like a more linear pathway that we have to follow, but we are all just going to wait and see for that to come out of the state, and we're all eagerly awaiting. I'm going to wrap up tonight, I hope we are at the end, by just talking about a transition that will happen next year. Next year in ELA and math, we will transition from NJSLA to the NJSLA-A, which means it's an adaptive test. Our students are familiar with an adaptive test because that is what the STAR reading and math test that they already take. It means that based on the answer that a student gives on one question, the test adjusts. Our teachers did not see that in the field test or did we, we didn't, there wasn't an observable thing, but we expected that is what we're being told will come when the actual real test goes live. This will cover ELA and mathematics from grades three through nine. It will assess the same skills that are aligned to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. The science test is not changing for next year. So we will still just have the NJSLA in science that will continue in its current format. The state is telling us that this will give us a more precise measurement of our individuals' academic abilities, and it also will have enhanced test security because those questions will be given in a different sequence to the students in the same room. And that next administration will happen in April of 2026 through May of 2026. And so that is all of the data that I have to share with you tonight.
At the expense of potentially sounding redundant for people who've heard this before, my one question before I open it up to the rest of the board is if you could just explain why the numbers look the way they do in eighth grade math as compared to Algebra I?
Just want to think about, yeah, so you know, our, there's, across the state, we are, like I said, we're kind of, I'm thinking of the best way to say these things. So our, many of our students in our middle school are taking our high school math courses, right? So we, we start in our sixth grade is our first year that we have a split in our students, right? And so some of our students go into math six, and they take a course that is aligned with the math six standards. And a little, about a third of our students, a little bit more than a third of our students go into a course that is sixth, seventh, and eighth grade standards integrated together. So we take out a third of that population. In the seventh grade, we have, we have three possible things that some of our students will start taking Algebra I as seventh graders. Some of our students will be taking an integrated course of seventh and eighth grade standards together, and some of our students will be taking our math seven. The majority of our math seven students go on to math eight, and math eight is our, is a straight math readiness course that will then lead into high school algebra. And so it really is a course that teachers really need to be thoughtful about motivation and about meeting individual needs and making sure that lots of strategies are used to help students unpack very complicated pre-algebra, algebra readiness and algebra skills in eighth grade math. Feel free to add to that as, as we have a math teacher that might like.
Just want to reiterate that about two-thirds of our eighth graders are taking Algebra I and geometry tests.
Yes.
So those numbers, those children are in those columns and not necessarily.
Correct.
Their eighth grade.
Correct.
And does anyone have any questions for Ms. Ford?
Yes. Can I ask a question? Do you mind go back to the slide about the ELA from third grade to that slide?
I don't think I'm there yet, hold on.
Yeah, I was looking for the slide number.
I'm going to guess you're in there. Am I there? Yep, there I am. Is that, do you want that one or you want the one before?
Oh, 12, this one is good too. Yes, thank you.
That one?
Yes, thank you. So I think before I ask my question, maybe you can help all of us understand first why NJ is a state test cannot be actually measured year-to-year growth for the each student cohort?
Oh, no, they are. That's just, our, the student cohort isn't the individual students are. So students do receive an SGP, and it's actually still part of the Achieve NJ and Teacher Evaluation that we report, that we get a report on the student growth percentile. That's not the data that is presented tonight. Tonight is proficiency, you have the NJSLA. But we, so growth SGP does exist with this test, not in this report?
Thank you for clarifying that. Because why I'm asking this question is I want public to understand for each grade learning standards, there are actually a snapshot of that each cohort at the end of the school year, the summative information. So when you, there's a diagram, you show like a third grade, fourth, when they move up to fourth grade, and next year they move to fifth grade, you compare that percentage. Actually, that's not a percentage of growth because it's just not the test is supposed, is designed to ask the student growth. It's not like climbing a ladder, you know, because each grade have a different learning standards. So, and then at the beginning of the school year, I think we talked about the investment of the federal funds and many years we are committed to the UDL. So as the board, I think our responsibility is to establish a measurable goal, evaluate whether our investment yielding the results so we can provide a clear oversight to all the student's success. And actually at the board retreat, many board members also mentioned we should have a measurable goal tied directly to our school district one. So right now, as you can see the slide in grade three, we have, we say about half or two out of five students are not meeting the reading grade standards. So I'm, you can see the trend there has been true for multiple years, right? It's 55%, 54%, 57%, and it's 58% meet. That means the other half did not meet the standards. So in math, and we also see grade seven, we have 72, that means one out of three, and going up one out of four not meeting the grade level expectation. And science, as you also see the similar pattern, one out of half the students do not meet the standards. And Mary, I know we talked about how we're working to improve these areas for previous board meeting. So I think the question maybe for you is what specific improvement, what measurable percentage we should, as a board and the public, we should expect to see next year?
I just, I don't want to cut Mary McGlocklin off, so sorry. I just want to clarify one thing about the standards. Can I take a minute? So I just do want to just to speak a little bit about when you said climbing a ladder and it's not climbing a ladder and it's addressing the proficiency at the end of the year. That's an absolute true statement. It's just a little bit more true in math than it is in ELA. So the ELA standards are really, and that's actually when we look at the different achievement in the, and when we look at the achievement from third grade to fourth grade, one of the reasons that we start to see that growth is it's very developmentally appropriate. So if you open up the ELA standards and you look at reading informational text, grade three standard one, there's going, it's going to give you a description of students should be able to retell, recall details from a passage. When you go to grade four and you look up reading informational text, grade four standard one, it's going to be the same skill that then becomes more complex. And that is correct all the way from kindergarten through grade 12 when it comes to the ELA standards. So the ELA standards are really much more like, you can think of the middle of the Guggenheim or like the New England Aquarium where it's a spiral staircase and you are spiraling skill complexity. The math standards are much more like a staircase. And so to your example of when students get to the end of third grade, there is an expectation of mastery of a certain skill set, and then some of those skills will drop off and new skills will be replaced at fourth grade. So the math standards are more effect, are more, are written more like a ladder and have that impact where the ELA is, is different. And that is one of the reasons that you might see a difference in the achievement level. Sorry, I just wanted to clarify that point. Thank you.
So the question back to is with all our great work we've done, what should we see as a measurable goal moving forward? The percentage for the?
I mean, I'm thinking about the state performance report card. So the state itself, like you asked about SGP versus, versus.
About the grade three, why are you focusing on the early literacy?
Yes. Absolutely.
Yeah, we know the first one, page three is we learn to read, and after that is a read to learn.
Yes.
Different construct, concept we're here. So that's why I'm really curious, and I think it's important to us to have a measurable goal, say, okay, by grade three, what we should expect to see?
Right. So what I just wanted to share with the community is that one of the public data points that the NJ DOE produces for every school district is something called the New Jersey School Performance Report. And when you look at the detailed performance report for each school, you will actually see that there is a proficiency, which is the data that I presented to today, and then there's a second table that talks about target goals being met. And it will show you for each school if we have met the target. The target goals are growth goals. And so you can, you can get to a situation, particularly in some of the areas where we are extremely high, we have not encountered this problem, but you can have, because of your high performance, it can be difficult to meet a growth goal. But the state of New Jersey themselves sets what is expected as reasonable growth, and if you don't meet that target, it is indicated on the school performance report card. So there are set standardized goals for each school to meet. Now, to your other point though, I think that there might be a little bit of holding, holding off on a specific number in third grade as we are in the first year of the K3 Literacy Initiative. So we've just finished our first round of an incredible amount of literacy data. We will be doing analysis of that data, turnkey professional development, working with our teachers in their professional learning communities. And I think that that data itself is expected to have an impact on what will be grade three next year. So I would like to see how that, how that state-level literacy initiative is implemented in our district.
So it sounds like we're very promising next year we're going to see some climb, right?
I never promise anything, but I think there are a lot of good things in place.
Okay. So here, I, six of us, in November, I think we attended the NJSBA workshop in November. So I attended a session called Unlock Literacy Success. They highlighted the NJ Tier System Support dash ER.
ER.
Yes. Yeah, project from NJ DOE.
Yes.
So they mentioned our 26 participating school districts see significant growth in reading outcomes. I'm just sharing the information, okay? And because we're a team here. One of the superintendent actually from the audience shared End of, and they say, school districts say their proficiency rates rose from 30% to 90% after Potlin wins NJ DOE. And NJ DOE, that presenter said all of the training materials used in that project are free and for public available. So I want.
Yes, we use many of those resources to do our dyslexia training, and also our teachers have six hours of Flex PD, and many of them choose the NJTSS ER program. That is something that we are absolutely familiar with and that we have gone through ourselves and explored and use as a resource. Many of our teachers though are trained in, or in Gillingham, or Wilson, or as part of the training for the phonics program. I am, I am a big fan of the resources that when the state produces things that we can really use, and the NJTSS ER resources are great. It is, it is not a one-size-fits-all PD. It is good for some of our teachers, and many of our teachers far exceed that information as well, and so we need customized PD for them.
So it sounds like if other school districts can make 290, it's very promising our school district can make it too, right?
You know, I, I don't know what school district you're speaking of, so I can't compare. I can tell you that the data that I presented tonight is some of the best data in the state of New Jersey. We are profoundly, this is data that, that most school districts would be thrilled to have, and I am incredibly proud of the data that we have in our school districts.
So do we agree that we can not make 90, about 75 benchmark? Is this appropriate and reasonable? Because we, as a board, we need, at the board retreat, we talk about we need to have a measurable goal. You know, the numbers make it a measurable goal. And that's something why I'm asking here is what's the measurable goal here for us to expect?
I don't know if there was a question, Mary.
Okay, it's okay, we don't have an answer to that.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't know there was a question, is what I said.
Oh, yeah. The question is, do you agree that 75 benchmark is appropriate and attainable measurable goal for next year for the early, for grade three?
I think that we are testing children, and that I am always working with our teachers, as is our supervisors, to help have the greatest level of proficiency in our early literacy students. But we are talking about the youngest learners doing the first round of state testing, and that is also to be considered. So I absolutely have every hope and expectation, and we work towards improved proficiency. As you see, a very large jump from grade three to grade four, part of that is developmental. And so, yes, we hope, we, we're on a little growth trend, continue to hope to, expect to see a continued growth trend, but I also know that we are talking about students. And so we have to, you know, and some of our students who experience the early years of life, there is still pandemic language loss. And so when you consider the difference that students in pre-pandemic had in nursery school and in their homes and going to the supermarket and the experience that natural language, language acquisition occurred, that has still impacted the kids that are in our Orchard and Village schools. So just, you know, none of that is to be forgotten. It's always a robust picture of what creates literacy.
So just a follow-up question. We talked about target goals that are given, reasonable goals and professional development. Those three components exist in the process today. So as a district, could we set some expectations or some goal for ourselves? Not something that, you know, we are going to be significantly measured against, rather to make sure that whatever professional development we choose, whatever, you know, however we look at the reasonable growth, where does Montgomery want to see themselves, right? Over the next year, two, three, as all of those changes are taking place? So I think what all we're asking is for us to think about what kind of targets we would want to achieve as a school district.
So I think just to remember that all of this is nuanced statistics, right? And one of the reasons that the performance report reports those two different levels, where there's a proficiency target met and a growth performance, is because we are talking about actual children who start with a particular proficiency level, and then we, the state measures that actual child. I feel like the state measures Arjun's proficiency, and the state measures Bob's proficiency, and the state measures Fiona's proficiency. And so they are looking for us to have a specific growth target. That's that second piece that's part of the New Jersey School Performance Report. You need to be able to look at the individual children that are in second grade and know where their learning targets are before I can just say to you, we should set a goal of 75% for third grade. We should set a goal that our children are proficient readers, and we should continue to see growth in the individual scores of our students. But I, it's a complex, there's obviously, we know, we know this, there's many things that go into measuring the literacy of a six, seven, and eight-year-old. And so we don't want, I wouldn't, I do not feel comfortable, you know, just committing to a number. Yes, the state's goal is hopefully that we get to 80%. And so that is what we're always shooting for. But to say that we are going to commit to that for next year, that's not something I could feel like I could be comfortable saying from the podium.
Yeah, I guess I'm just saying for us as a, as a team, right? Whatever you're striving for to accomplish, you know, like I have to do end-of-year accomplishments, same thing, right? Where is it that you would envision it to be? Nobody's going to hold anybody accountable to it, but it would be nice to see that kind of progress with all the data you just described that you have, to see how we can push our students. with all the data you just described that you have, to see how we can push ourselves, right? Push the, the, you know, particularly professional development. Tang mentioned the workshop. I think we met a lot of school districts, uh, and a lot of folks. And they're utilizing some of those data components to drive change within their school district. You and I discussed the AP, uh, courses and how that's being much expended to all different types of learners and it's all due to professional development. One thing that I found intriguing was that the professional development was within, right? So it wasn't from the outside coming in. It was, it was the, the teacher that was successful teaching another teacher, right? So.
How Miss Reyes is doing for our sheltering mission construction? And how you did for our, um, uh, what was it called? The workshop method, the.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And our, our, yeah, we, we have a, in Ed Camp, lots of our teachers are teaching other teachers. And often, I mean, our supervisors are the number one professional development provider for their teachers. But yes, internal capacity is an absolute must, um, in order to build your student success. I just, I continue to, um, I continue to be incredibly proud with the high achieving data of students at seventy-nine, seventy-eight, eighty-eight, eighty-nine percent proficiency. That is stellar data across the school district. That is to be celebrated and. Thank you. And you, for yourselves, you, you should be celebrating in that accomplishment. And so we look at our youngest learners. Yes, we are trying to support them to be able to demonstrate what they know better. But when you see that upward trend, this is not a literacy crisis. We, we have students that we are working on in helping them assess themselves better and do better in the assessments. But we, um, are completely successful literacy and academic, um, academic school as a school district.
Matt, I just wondered that when you said that children in the early literacy grades, right? K through three are learning to read. And then once they get beyond that to the fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade, uh, then they're reading to learn. Um, it's very true. That is extremely true. And learning to read is, is quite an accomplishment in, in those years. And the first time that they see these tests in third grade, thank you so much for doing such a great job and preparing them so that they are coming out at fifty and sixty from the get go and not twenty and thirty like other districts are, um, through the STAR test and through everything else. Uh, I wonder though, how many of us, and I challenge you to go and do this if you have not ever done this. Go to the DOE website and go take a practice test for a third grade literacy exam. It is amazing what they are asking these eight year olds to be able to do to critically think about, uh, a comparison between a video of, um, humpback whales that are immigrating to a different part of the world. And then draw that comparison to how, um, migration happened across Africa through a little detailed article. And now please do a compare and contrast essay to describe this. And God bless our eight year olds that sit there and are able to do that. And I literally would just say, just, I challenge anybody to think about that when you're, when you're looking at these scores. And the fact that they do have that trajectory and they are moving to the seventies, eighties percent by the time we get through high school and are so well prepared and so well sought after from colleges and universities. So thank you very much for all of the you've done. That's, and I, I think very.
I believe our school district has excellent teachers and strong resources. And teachers carry out very important work and they do it very well. But many of the responsibility for the school district direction, such as decisions about curriculum, line with administration and board is part of the educational leadership and administration. So I think after all this discussion on the, yeah, a curriculum, this board gained a clear understanding of the high level direction our administrator want to pursue. And given the confidence of administrator have expressed in this initiatives, I think it's reasonable to expect some meaningful and measurable improvement. As you also mentioned about, uh, early literacy is a foundation for all the future learning. Um, why I'm talking about the third grade is because students are not proficient by third grade. They begin to, uh, even later subject lists, other science, social science, social studies, math, word problems, add a little bit disadvantage. So that's, uh, why we're talking about the grade three, uh, this thing. And also here in other school district at the workshop, uh, they can make a chip of the goal. I think this is promising for parents too, right? And, uh, I believe some of the board member at the board for many years probably heard some parents, uh, share their concerns. Their kids cannot read at a reading grade level. And, uh, uh, of course this, you know, something we want to continue to work on is, uh, is an area for improvement. That's just what I want to say. And also, um, I have another question is Fiona mentioned about, uh, uh, MTSS and, uh, other, uh, data points of Renaissance STAR you use to, um, to identify where the student need the, need the improvement and, uh, um, you know, use that the data point. So my question is, uh, what's the fall to spring? That's basically the baseline to post growth for students. They started at, uh, low, medium and high skill levels for differently subject you mentioned. Do you have, uh, some input for that? What's the growth?
I think that we've spoken about this at ACI before. Right? This is data that we've reviewed in ACI?
No.
This is a conversation that we've had in ACI?
You mean for ELA, math and science?
Yes, the request for this data, I think that we've had this conversation in ACI.
Yeah. Uh, what's the growth here is like, do they all grow from the, like the different skills levels? Do they grow or they don't grow? What's the growth here?
So right, we do monitor our student growth. Um, we shared out with you, um, that we, we should, we shared out the students at the, the ninetieth percentile and that the students, um, that was the, the data that was asked for. And we shared out that and, um, I think that there has been lots of conversation about this request in the past.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Does this have anything to do with our NJSLA data?
Yes, uh, because.
Do you have this presentation to go on?
I see what you mean by this. Oh, that's the national percentile. Actually, we're asking about, uh, the baseline and post compared to themselves, how much they grow here. Because we see some, when you break down by the different subgroups, we see the, some students struggling and some are very, doing very well. Therefore, uh, is how much they grow with a different performance band?
Yes. So that is absolutely data that we measure as a school district. Um, it is not the data that is part of the spring NJSLA presentation. And so that is not data that I'm here to present tonight.
Okay, so, but do you have answer to my question? I know you're not.
Am I monitoring student growth?
No, no, no.
As a school district, do our, do our students grow? Yes.
What's the growth at different performance band?
I don't, they don't, I don't have that with the NJSLA data. And so I cannot present on that for you tonight.
Okay, is this something that you can work on, present to the public?
I think that that's a conversation that we've had at ACI.
So at the ACI you said no, yes, or I forgot.
I think I'd have to go back to the minutes to look at that.
So here I will, um, let the public know why it is important to understand the growth data. Okay, the state assessment that here we see where minister wants a year at the end of the school year to determine whether students have met the grade level.
Sorry, I'm sorry, but this is, this is now, at this point, any.
Oh, okay. You want a questions for the presentation?
For the presentation only.
Let's hold on. No, no, thank you. I'll hold my, uh, talk towards the end of the, uh, board meeting. Thank you.
I have one question. Uh, you said something about math lab, uh, for students who need extra help. Is that consists of math teachers?
Yes.
Or students who are achieving, high level achievers?
That is, um, I think I might have answered your question too quickly. Math lab is taught by math teachers, but I think there was a second part of your question.
I said like sometimes the kids need extra help.
Yes.
Are we giving them an extra help? Because I hear kids go to private tutoring. Because, you know, I hear that a lot in the community. Um, so I'm just wondering, are we giving extra help for the people who cannot afford private tutoring?
Absolutely. So, um, I am going to count on Ms. Redell to correct me if there is something that I don't, um, present properly in this moment. So the, um, math lab is a complimentary class to other math classes that are run. So if students are struggling in proficiency, their math class might be partnered with a math lab so that there is additional math instruction. So that's one way that we help our students, that they don't need to go out and seek private tutors. We make sure that our students that are struggling are provided with the support they need during the school day and within their schedule. In addition to that, every single teacher is required in our school district to provide after school help and they all do. And, um, our supervisors are not. And yet the person that I have witnessed, I will say the most because I can't speak to all of the math teachers in the room. But that math office is a hopping hub of high school students seeking assistance and help, um, often from Ms. Redell herself. So yes, math lab is part of the classes that the students are supported in, within their schedule. And then there's additional after school support, um, when students need additional help as well.
Because that's, I never paid for private tutoring. So my kids took advantage of that before school or after school. So I was just wondering, you guys have that?
Absolutely. And we encourage our students to take advantage of that. That is the, one of the best ways that they can get the help they need from their actual teacher.
Just one more comment, not to dwell on this discussion, but I think we can definitely, um, be happy about the results that we're seeing in the higher grades. I think the point that we're trying to discuss here is if fifty-seven percent of our third graders are proficient in reading, how can, what can we do? So it's seventy-five percent or eighty percent, right? And I understand it's difficult and this is a good result to be happy about. But I think of it almost in reverse. What about the rest of the students that are not there, right? So the goals, the asks, the asks that we have here are, how can we hold ourselves accountable to make sure that that number is higher year over year and that we continue growing it and, and setting up some goals? So I think that was part of the discussion, not to question the work that the team is doing, but how can we be doing better in this process? Thank you.
And I want to add and just maybe clarify. Um, I think data is crucial and important, but as an educator myself, um, and I know we're doing this and you can just confirm that as well. It's really important too that we're having, you guys are having conversations with the teachers as well and looking at the day to day and you're constantly writing communication, making sure that the students, um, the day to day as well, that they are proficient and they're not struggling and they're able to, um, monitor through report cards and assessments how the children are progressing. Um, as Ms. Nina said, you know, these tests are, you know, especially the younger age, you know, what they're able to maybe, um, how they're, I guess, if, I know it's showing proficiency, but at the same time, I think it's also another accurate, maybe even to me personally, I feel a more accurate picture to see that day to day, correct?
No, I think that, thank you for, yes. And so I think when we look at the big screeners, whether it's the new screener data that we've just collected or whether it's a STAR test that we've been using in second through eighth, second through 10th grade for many years, those are like the safety nets, right? So that's like the, oh no, let's check, this kid is dropping. Let's, you know, catch them up and scoop them up in the net. But what changes the student proficiency is every day today when the teacher is conferencing with the students, reading in the small group, sitting in the desk, sharing a story with them, checking on their writing. And that's happening every day in Orchard and Village and at Lower too. But, you know, we're going to talk about our little kids, so, all right.
Thank you, Ms. Warland. I really appreciate all of your hard work and efforts. There's one more? Okay.
I just wanted to make a comment about the third grade. I, I think we're all saying the same thing and I'm encouraged by hearing that, of course, we want our children to move in the upward direction. I think the third grade in particular does need to be looked at across the state. Um, because we're talking about third graders taking this test for the very first time. And I think understanding that is really, really critical. So I just want to make that point that, um, it needs to be compared across the state of what we're asking third graders to do as a state. But of course, I think we're all saying the same thing, which is wonderful. We obviously want all of our students to continue to move forward. Thanks.
And evidence-based research design is going to be helpful, right? This country paid, hired faculty so much to improve our early literacy. And we see very promising and yelling results from this twenty-six Piloting School District. And that can be our goal, right?
Again, thank you, Ms. Warland. Thank you for a robust discussion. Uh, is there anything else on superintendent's report? I'm excited. Okay. Will you please move on to our committee representative reports? First up, MTEA report. Mr. Rizzoli, thank you very much.
All right. Good evening. All right. October is wrapped up and we're here in the middle of November. MTA's continue to be busy. We, uh, ended up October with our Halloween costume exchange. Really popular with so many families come out and give us costumes, take some home. It was awesome to see. Uh, we partnered that with the trick or treat giveaway. So we gave out a book and some treats to families that came over to UMS and popped in. So really well attended, several hundred books given out, which is amazing. And then we were just getting Trump or Treat. We had a really long line for our little spin the wheel. That was very exciting for a lot of our students. Uh, we continue to remember right now, we have the winter clothing drive going. We're going to be donating clothes and giving away sweatshirts, hats, heavy jackets. So we're having that going on right now. We're also helping support some of the local food pantries with our food drive. That's happening right now. It's very important. We really keep up on that. So we're able to get a grant to make sure we open purchase of food ourselves. And we've been getting donations from all the buildings, so that is much appreciated. Um, we're excited that we were able to get an MOA, a member in agreement with the Board of Ed. We appreciate everyone's time and effort to make sure that that happens. The MTA already has taken our next step. We have ratified our piece of the contract. So we're excited for the Board to do the same and get this all wrapped up. Thank you very much.
Do we have any board member, delegate or representative reports?
I can speak for. I'm the liaison for the PTA, PTO, PTSA. And the PTA meeting, um, as well as the PTO, although I was unable to attend that one. Um, they had the chair from the Montgomery Rocky Hill Municipal Alliance Youth Service Commission. And they, um, discussed and providing information regarding programs, identifying problems and objectives within our town. Um, the resources, had information initiative to wait until eighth. And that is a, um, an initial program that they're trying to help families understand the benefits to waiting until eighth grade to give their children cell phones. Um, and it discusses that and that was just very interesting reading. You can also on the website to find more information. Uh, so that was one of the big highlights. Please go to the websites for volunteers, um, information and event information for the future. Um, the, what else? Oh, I have a letter from Jim Patel, the president of the PTSA that he asked me to read tonight. Volunteer, volunteerism is down overall across the district. It decreases with each passing year and gets worse in the upper grades. From August through the start of school, fifty-eight families signed up. And since school began, we've only gained eleven more memberships. Out of that total, ten are from the PTSA board, which means only fifty-nine families out of a student body of roughly sixteen hundred are currently represented through the memberships. Last school year, at the end of September, we had a hundred and sixty-five members, a near fifty-nine percent drop year over year. Back to school night saw a total of three new member signups. After the latest PTSA newsletter that went out highlighting the, the dire situation, we saw an uptick in membership. We are currently at a hundred and thirteen memberships, still a near thirty-two percent decrease from last year at this time. Unique to MHS PTSA is that we are competing against hundreds of clubs, sports booster teams, classic group, excuse me, classic groups, all running fundraisers. So as to not compete against those clubs, the PTSA relies on only two fundraisers, memberships and Snack Shack. Snack Shack sales are down significantly year over year as is membership. The numbers concerning the truth is without strong parent participation, the PTSA cannot continue to fund and organize many of the programs that benefit both students and their families. Last year, valuable opportunities like the interview clinic for students had to be cut. And this year, the freshman boot camp for parents was also canceled. These are exactly the types of programs the PTSA is here to provide. But they depend on more families stepping forward in support. Future cuts will affect social events such as the ice cream social and staff appreciation. Further cuts would, would see a decreasing grant funds. These grant funds are relied on by teachers, students and various clubs. Decreasing or eliminating them would have a devastating effect on the entire school. Last year's freshman boot camp cost the PTSA approximately two hundred to, two hundred dollars to run. Well, over a hundred parents attended the boot camp. There was not a single PTSA membership sign up during or immediately after the event. during or immediately after the event. The interview clinic takes many people and hundreds upon hundreds of man hour, man-hours to organize and run, not to mention the expenses involved. Without enough funds and enough volunteers, two had to be canceled. Membership makes a difference, whether or not you are able to volunteer your time. By simply joining, you are showing that you value these programs and want them to continue. Imagine the possibilities if even a fraction of our sixteen hundred families joined together. We could restore these opportunities and create even more for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Harris.
I have an update from Somerset County School Boards Association. The meeting took place actually yesterday, Monday, November seventeenth, at Somerset Votech High School in Bridgewater. For those of you that have joined me in the past, thank you. It's been a pleasure working with that team. For the rest of the board members or any new board members, it's a great opportunity to join in and participate, not only learn about the laws, the changes in ethics, any of the insights around, from New Jersey School Boards Association officers, updates from county executive superintendents, all of those, all of that information is being shared during that session. And the bonus is that the Votech High School culinary team prepares dinner for us prior to the meeting, so that's always a pleasure. Over the last few sessions, there's been some change in leadership. Richard Yanuzzi is the president, and we've been working on building more of a panel discussions, bringing resources together for this before conversation and, and sharing and exchanging information, and that's what took place last night. Stronger together, effective superintendent-board relationship was the topic that was discussed. So I strongly encourage all of you to attend. If you have time, it's an excellent opportunity to get to know folks. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Willa Dragon. Any other?
Just a quick update on Amsepta. We met on October twenty-eighth via Zoom. Very fun and happy news that ESPN recognized our unified program. The bulk of the meeting was led by a skilled lawyer in HIV law, and he talked about how children with special needs are victimized via the HIV process. This was also in reference to the Monti news article, or sorry, the Monti news article was discussed, and two cases were brought up as case studies. One, when the use of the word, of the word "R" and the perception of the victim is the driving force to be found as a violation. And the other case that was brought up was the acoustic, acoustic, acoustic case. We ended by just talking about the annual fundraiser dance that is set for March sixth, and as much participation as possible is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Delly. Are there any other member delegate reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to our board committee reports. First is assessment curriculum and instructional committee. So Board Member Delly, you're up again.
Thank you. So we met on November eighteenth, both virtual and in person. We finalized the norms for our meetings, and these norms will be in the notes moving forward. We also talked about the statewide assessment presentation that Ms. Borland so beautifully presented this evening. We previewed the, the presentation with the understanding that they, that the committee really wanted feedback, candid feedback from the committee members to suggest comments on clarity and transparency for this evening, wanting to make sure that the public really understood the data and left with a good understanding of our student growth and excellence. We also talked about the literary text recommendation, which was the book Inside Out and Back Again, which is a novel told in verse or poetry format that touches upon all seventh-grade poetry standards by the NJSLA. It will be a new addition to support the curriculum, not a replacement of any text. We then talked about the updated state field test that you've heard about this evening, that the NJSLA adaptive and the NJGPA adaptive assessments were administered successfully. Mr. Papa also was diligent in making sure that all information went out in the form of an FAQ for all parents and community members. We then talked about professional development, that staff participated in professional development on October twentieth. These days are designed to meet the needs of the district's PDPs, professional development plans. District-wide administration will support staff's use of data to guide instruction, provide assistance around the district's multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS, as well as continuing the district's commitment to SEL, student, sorry, social emotional learning. Additional professional, professional development targets will include curriculum articulation and review, K-three literary initiative support, which we talked about earlier, special education legal training, the Hegarty writing in elementary replacement literacy classrooms, school counselor articulation, and school nurse articulation. And Ms. Borland just presented the information and updates about the October twentieth PD Day. Conferences were held at OAGES and VES on November third, fourth, and fifth. Both elementary schools will also have spring conferences on March seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth. LMS and UMS will also held conferences on November fourth. After these November conferences, both LMS and UMS have conferences at the request of parents throughout the remainder of this school year. In terms of school counseling, we talked about all sophomores and juniors had the opportunity of taking the PSAT at MHS during the school day on October twenty-first. The district covers the cost for all eleventh graders. Information about the PSAT was communicated to parents via email as well as multiple locations on the school website. By offering this test during the day, it makes participation obviously extremely high. The high school recommends students to participate in the PSAT to receive feedback about strengths and weaknesses and to enter the competition and in order to be eligible as well for the competition for National Merit Scholar scholarships in eleventh grade and to help prepare for the SAT. Lastly, we talked about the admission game, which was a presentation given at the high school on October twenty-first as well. Peter Van Berks, Berkskirk? Hope I'm saying that right. A former dean of admission at Franklin Marshall presented the admission game, which is a feature presentation of four candidates applying to a fictionist college. And he revealed how their credentials are assessed by admissions officers with a focus on academic program development, essay writing, and letters of recommendation. Lastly, Mr. Delgado will share information and updates about both events at the November ACI meeting, which happens to be tomorrow. So I have a report on that in December. Any questions or comments?
Just happy that Inside Out and Back Again is on our agenda tonight. It's wonderful to get these young middle schoolers. They, they are really very interested in novels written in verse, and it's something that we were not given as we were in middle school, so it's really nice. Thank you. Thank you. Next would be Operations Facility and Finance Committee, but the committee chair is not with us tonight. Ms. Dargan is going to report. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The committee met on November eleventh, and the first item was budget preparation for fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. Can you hear me? The first topic of discussion was the preparation for twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven fiscal year budget. Mr. Italiano provided an update on the budget development process, including an overview of the budget calendar, budget submission checklist, and the new program request process for all budget managers across the district departments. Mr. Italiano emphasized that any new request must be supported by a strong rationale with consideration given to enrollment trends, associated costs, and detailed justifications. He expressed confidence in that budget proposal will be submitted on schedule. Second item was CUSAC status update. Mr. Italiano reviewed the CUSAC timeline, which includes three major components. District performance review. The first submission was due to county office on November fifteenth, which has been completed. The second is indicator documentation upload. The second part involves uploading all the required indicator documents to the shared drive for county office review. This remains the most trend-consuming portion of the process, but which is duly underway. CUSAC, third, third component is CUSAC site visit. The final step will do the onsite review by the county officials on March third, twenty-twenty-six. Mr. Italiano reported that the district is currently ahead of schedule, which is very positive news. Third topic was raw grant projects, regular operating district grant. Previously approved raw grants for two projects, UMS moving improvements and HWAC upgrades were discussed. The district is responsible for sixty percent of the project cost in order to receive the forty percent from the state. We are waiting for the final approval from the state, and then our process of going out to bed will start. The fourth topic was Food Service Advisory Committee. Food Service Advisory Committee meeting continued to be held regularly. Overall feedback has been positive with few comments which are being addressed. The committee acknowledged that improving food quality is an ongoing effort, and the district continues to work closely with the vendor to address any of this priority. The fifth topic was Health Insurance Cost Saving Initiative. Ms. Philak reported on her attendance at NJSPA workshop, which included a session on managing health insurance costs. She shared information on a new approach that allows school district to save money through prescription rebates provided directly by pharmaceutical companies, which is still in the discussion. Mr. Italiano will follow up with the district's health insurance broker to determine whether this initiative could benefit the district. Next, we have a Q and A session. The question and answer portion of the meeting focused on getting a deeper understanding of a budget process and future raw grant opportunities. Next meeting will be held on December ninth, twenty-twenty-five. Thank you.
Just a question. Who is on the Food Service Advisory Committee?
The Food Service Advisory Committees are held by the students, parents, and our vice principals. And sometimes I work with them.
Okay, so it's within the school, each one of the schools?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Is that any different than how we did it? Because I remember you were one of the main people that discussed the food service committees and the quality. Is that what you recall that it was done in the past? Or you were just curious?
I agree with this approach. I think we were at the phase of finding a new.
I understand.
So it was a little bit different, but I was just curious if there was any other. That's all.
Sounds good. Any other questions?
Are board members allowed to go to those meetings if they choose to?
That? I've never had that done, like, in the past, so.
Just curious.
Ms. Lockland, like, that, like, basically as a board member, I would say no, like, as like a parent, like, yes? Because it's really like student-parent, like, kind of feedback? But as board members, if you have any questions about the process, I would be your middle person to kind of like find out, give you the feedback. So if you hear anything, as you're a bridge from the community that might not be coming to me, share it with me, and then I can research it and follow up accordingly. So that is what I can do for you as a board member and like monitoring our food service.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next is our report from Policy and Communications Committee. Cookie or Anya would like to go first?
Yeah, I'll try to be short. We actually had two meetings during this last board session, so I'm going to begin with October sixteenth session, where we reviewed a couple policies. Policy around professional services, administrative employment contracts, as well as eligibility of resident and non-resident student. I just wanted to highlight that policy twenty-two hundred was also updated to remove reference to specific NJSLS standards. As these standards are continuing to change, there's some simplification of the language that Strauss Esme is working through with us. On, there was a discussion that took place during the session around tutoring, and we just wanted to reiterate that the committee had discussed centering on tutoring and classified that per policy, clarified that per policy thirty-two, thirty-two, the following should be followed. Private tutoring shall not take place on school grounds. Private tutoring for a fee by a staff member shall not provide private tutoring for a fee to any student that is currently enrolled in their class. On the communications side, I think we discussed the district website. We provided some additional intel and insight of what would be good to see, and we provided that to superintendent. On November thirteenth, we addressed policies listed, which were duties of public school accountant, internal controls. In those policies, we reviewed the recommendation for the first reading that will take place today, and they focused on changes in administrative policy. They were updated to be compliant with the law. Benita covered the CUSAC, so I won't reiterate that. Strategic plan, the update on the strategic plan will be presented at the February board meeting by the goal team leaders. The committee members requested to show a visual of what the goals are, where they started, and where they are. As far as New Jersey School Boards is offering, which is a great opportunity, a free-living policy annual to all members of the New Jersey School Board Association beginning in January, that was also covered at our meeting, actually, last night in the Somerset County. So it's highly promoted, so we'd definitely take advantage of it. And also, a new board member handbook. I put together a new board member handbook to supplement the district's knowledge on what new members have to know and be aware of. So we'll actually submit it to all of you. Some of you provided some feedback. I've already made those updates. So if you do have any additional changes you would like to make, please send them over to me as it would be great if we could get that approved at the next school board meeting as part of our regular standard documents, especially for new board members joining the team, so. The only other thing I wanted to highlight, and this is more from a policy perspective, during the NJSPA workshop, there was some discussion in regards to the recent United States Supreme Court case, Mahmoud versus Taylor. There's a lot of focus, and there's a lot of resources out there for parents when it comes to opting children out of certain part of the curriculum. I know our school is actually featured as one of the messages that was sent to the community, but for the parents, if you do have concerns, this goes beyond health curriculum. If you do have concerns, Mary has put together a process where you reach out to the principals and can work through that process and can work through that process uh with the appropriate um principals in each one of the schools, so. Thank you. That's my update.
Thank you. Board member, do you want to go again? Is there anything you'd like to add? Any questions on policy?
Um, I haven't had a chance to read it, but I just wanted to thank the committee for the handbook. I think it's a really excellent idea, particularly as we transition to a new um new board. I think it's really critical to be able to have as much information on the as on the onset. So thank you for putting that together. I think it's a great resource. Thank you.
I conquered that, Mr. He, uh, the appendix outlined which months the boards should do achieve what goals. I hope we can also consider that, you know. Thank you.
Thank you guys. I do want to. Thank you for making some of the suggestions from the first iteration. I know you've been at this for a very long time. It's a big undertaking for one person. Thank you so much for that. If anyone has further feedback, please, um, you know, provide it to uh Board Member, like the German before the December PCC meeting, because we would like to discuss it at that meeting as well.
Is that, is that the deadline, the next board meeting?
The next PCC meeting. Because we're gonna definitely.
The next PCC meeting, December fourth. December fourth. I printed it, but I haven't brought it yet, but I will.
So one of the other features for the new board members, um, and all of you guys as part of the Somerset County School Board Association, and I've highlighted that in the past, there was a school leader award. And I think this shows true collaboration across the entire school board, uh, where you have certain um trainings and uh sessions that if you attend, you actually qualify. And at that meeting, the school board every month is recognized. This yesterday, um, Menville, Mary, your old school district and.
Yours too, right?
Was recognized, um, and you know, they work very closely with their superintendent and and school board members. But it's a, it's a wonderful recognition, beautiful plaque, um, for all of you that are interested in participating. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, uh, can I ask a question for the reports we did? Actually, for Christina, uh, you mentioned about the decreasing of the uh membership for those PTAs. Have you considered all the present consider about the declining total enrollment of the school district? That correlates and contribute to that? Because every year we're losing a hundred students, that's about three, four percent. According to the number you said, we're losing about three percent every year. So it sounds like correlates, right?
I'm sorry, what was the question exactly?
Oh, you mentioned about declining of the parents' involvement in the organization, right? About three percent every year. That's the number I've heard. And then I was just looking at the total enrollment of our school district, number of students. Actually, we keep losing about a hundred students per year. So it sounds like we're losing four percent. It's kind of like numbers correlate with each other. I don't know how much that contribute to that. Is, I don't want to say our parents are not motivated to participate. It could be just the families' numbers are going down, so I don't know.
Um, I can't speak on behalf of, um, Mr. Patel, but I can certainly ask him, um, at our next meeting. Um, but yes, I think the overall message is across, you know, I've seen a pattern throughout my attendance on all the meetings. It's just that, you know, we understand, I, it's understandable that everyone has schedules, but just having that, um, just joining the membership, you know, is the first step, just to help the district. So if families can just, you know, look into that as well, that would be great. But again, I don't want to speak on behalf of.
And those funds, those, uh, those uh membership funds and dues that we pay, those, and I'm so sorry, I was one of those late ones that signed up late this year. And you do have to do it for each school, just so you know, so it's not just one membership for the whole district. Because I have kids in three different schools, so I'm in three different memberships. Those are what fund everything that they're trying to do with their social events and for the kids, for the teachers, for, for everybody. So yeah, it's really important for us to.
I think it's also really important to note that, um, a decline in parent volunteerism is a national phenomenon. It's not something that's happening at Montgomery. It's happening across the nation. Um, and that's really important. As an educator, we follow that very closely and it's, um, it's steeped in, in data in terms of, uh, a national.
Same, yeah. The message I, I think we want to deliver is not saying our parents are not, not trying to engage is, right? It's the national trend.
And, and membership is open to even non-parents. So non-parents can contribute to the dues for all those associations, you know, from elementary to high school. So if there are non-parents, what would like to, uh, contribute to the funds for these schools, you can certainly support them.
And another one, I know you covered in your report about, um, the municipal alliance, talk about that. And at the meeting, I heard the presenter, one that we, uh, the community really collaborate together, the parents collaborate together. I heard this from Ms. Mr. Corey in the past too, is wait till the end of the eighth grade, you know, not the beginning of the eighth grade, at the end of the eighth grade for smartphones and age sixteen for social media. So that's really the recommendation. I hope we all parents trying to align together, work as a group, uh, to hold the standard.
If we all hold the line together, then there'll be less. But she has one, but he has one. It's absolutely true. The more we can be together on that, it's better for their mental health and for their academic growth and social growth.
And one thing I just really, I thought was really interesting, and this was a conversation I actually had with one of our administrators um, months back at a meeting, is, you know, if you just start small and you think about your child's friends in that group and talking to their parents and if that little group is all on the same page, and that's a good step. Um, if you guys, you know, they can be aligned on whether it's cell phones or whatever sort of, um, internet technology use, et cetera. But that's a nice way to start small and go from there.
Just on the policy that was just implemented on cell phones in our schools, we had three students at the session at the high school who said that they are more focused without their phones, so positive feedback from the students.
Thank you. And since, uh, our Chair of HRC has taken ill tonight, I don't have his update. Though we did meet and, um, discuss many confidential personnel matters at HRC. So at this time, I will have to ask for a motion to approve the minutes. So it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the following board meetings, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five executive session and October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five business meeting.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All those abstentions? None?
I'm staying present at the.
You can still vote. What if you are abstaining? That's noted.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we'd like to acknowledge, uh, correspondence to the board. List of correspondence to the board is presented above and on the agenda. Thank you very much. And we will now move into our action agenda items, public comment portion. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allotted one opportunity to address the board regarding the action agenda items only for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment, please state your full name and address and enter both on the Chromebook provided. Being mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees and board members and to avoid any liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portion of the meeting are not structured as a question and answer session, but rather are offered as opportunities for the public to share their thoughts with the board. The board may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been handled through a proper chain of command, usually starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of the session. Are there any public comments to action agenda items? Seeing none, the public comment portion of our action agenda items closed. Uh, now we have our action agenda item. Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the administrative items as follows, one point one to one point two. Is there any?
First question.
I just have one question to one point four.
Okay, we have to move to.
So we do a motion second, then one.
So is, is there a motion to approve the action agenda items?
So moved. Second.
And is there any discussion?
This one's small question on two point four. I see is, um, we are approving something, uh, throughout the distribution. From seven, seven twenty-five to six thirty twenty-six. So just wondering, we are in November right now. Uh, it takes this long to come to the board for approval. Is it because of the contracts we're going to see one by one?
July, like the Mercer County Special Services for the district.
I believe for clarity, we relisted these items to note in out of district to, to note a non-resident fee that was in the contract. So this was for clarity to list on the agenda, the exact wording that was in the contracts that we received. And this was the first time that we were assessed that fee. So for formality during the Q-SAC year, we wanted to kind of just be consistent with the contracts. So these were actually, did Mary correctly, if I'm wrong, these were previously approved?
I, I don't want to speak to that because I don't know that to be accurate.
Okay. That was the information that I had, so then. This really is not my section again. Do you have something else to add to that or do you want to follow up on this?
Yeah, I was gonna say I will follow up after I talk with Julie. It's not uncommon, not saying it's not, it's not uncommon. Sometimes the students have already started going to school and, and we approve later. It's not, but usually, uh, if it's July, then you know, by September, we should be able to get something. Sometimes you don't get the contracts, I guess.
And that was the point that I was going to say. They don't always, as you know, working in special services, they don't always show up timely. The exact answer though, we're gonna have to go back to the office and research and we'll follow up with you in any available time.
Well, thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions on any of the action agenda items for discussion?
Actually, um, I just received notification, Mr. Italiano, you are correct, they were approved originally without the non-resident fee. So they're just being re-approved.
Thank you for that clarification.
So just really, it was just for the seven hundred and fifty dollar fee that was now in addition?
Which was something, this is the first time that this happened?
No, I believe it was always happened, but in the tuition line, it wasn't separate.
It was broke out and it was, well, this is the first time it was broke out holding non-resident fee. So we wanted to be consistent with our agenda for the contract for Q-SAC. I think we both said the same thing. All right. So now that that question's answered and thank you for getting that. Any other questions on any other items before we make our vote? Okay. If there's not, then I'm gonna take the, we'll call it items, uh, one point one through four point two. Dr. White?
Yes.
Stellan?
Yes.
Franklin Herman?
Recues from one point seven, two point three, four to four point two. Yes to all.
Could you just repeat one more time the recues items, please?
One point seven, two point three, four to four point two, four point oh to four point two.
Noted. Thank you. Sarah's?
Uh, yes, everything and recues from one point seven to two point three, four point oh to four point two.
Noted. Thank you. Ms. Willard, do you want to turn it again?
Uh, yes, but I'm going to abstain from three point four.
Noted. Thank you. Clark? Thank you. Ms. Meehan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion's carried. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, the Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public for any new business. Members of the public are allotted one opportunity to bring any new business to the board. For up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment, please state your full name and address and enter both on the Chromebook provided. Being mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees and board members and to avoid any potential liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. Public comment portion of the meeting are not structured as question and answer sessions. The board may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been handled through a proper chain of command, usually starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. Is there any public comment for new business to the board?
Karen Anderson Bellmead. Um, actually, I just wanted to compliment you. Um, I've been here obviously several board meetings and curriculum, curriculum discussions can get a little challenging and, um, I just want to say I appreciate that because that's one of the things I've talked about is behavior. And I think, I'm not supposed to, but I, I think it was very good. And it wasn't easy, questions I could tell, and I just want to compliment that that was really healthy discussion from a public's perspective. So thank you for pushing yourselves through that. Um, I drove one question, I sent you an email and it's been a question about the audit. I know three of you voted for it and most, and the rest of you did not. And I still would like to have answers as to why you felt like it wasn't something beneficial to our business. So that's all. Thank you.
Are there any additional public comments? Hearing and seeing none, the public comment portion is now closed.
Okay, so now we have our closing discussion of the board.
Yes, thank you. So I have, uh, two, uh, topics I want to discuss. The first one is continuing our conversation about the growth data. So, um, as we talked about, the growth data is a specific cohort, we, uh, need at least two data points, right? One at baseline, the beginning of the school year and one post-assessment at the end of the school year. So for reading, for example, NJDOE, uh, this year along with forty-one other states now mandated the school district administer the early literacy screener in grades K to three, as we've heard, um, in the report. September, January and May, and, uh, as Ms. Bornan talked about, the end of this month, parents are gonna receive the report. Um, in addition, our district uses Renaissance Star for ELA math as the local benchmark assessment, also three times a year. So we know frequency creates utility and we cannot meaningfully measure progress with a single data point uh, once a year, at especially the end of the school year. So assessing once is symbolism, assessing twice is impact. So assessing, uh, once sends a signal that we care about something. Assessing twice means not only we care about something, but we also care improving something. This is what we hope for education in this country, improvement. So I often heard the question, what data show that we're not doing well? I believe that's the wrong question. The real question should be, what are the areas, uh, we can improve? So continuous improvement is not a reaction to poor outcomes. It's the core responsibility of educators and the leaders. And, uh, we're body of nine and we're part of the educational leadership and administration team. So we should make ourselves also accountable too. So for now, I want the public to understand why the growth data is essential. Uh, the board cannot make informed decisions or even have meaningful discussions without it. So for example, we've often, um, told that our students are strong in math or need some improvement in reading and they are challenged at different levels. But without the growth data, how can we evaluate whether that's actually happening? So how much our low, medium, high performing student growing within each school year? Without information to this question, we cannot assess whether students are being effectively challenged, whether interventions are working or whether our investments are yielding results. So growth data is not optional. It's foundational to accountability and continuously improvement. This is not about criticism. It's about clarity, transparency and a shared commitment to helping every student grow. So we heard our administrator, uh, they review the local growth data and use it as one of the data, many data points for, uh, for decision-making. So, um, if the data is actively reviewed and applied in decision-making, then why has it never been provided when I formally asked for the results of such analysis? Uh, first asked for this information earlier this year to support the budget inquiries and evidence-based decision-making. And during this year, multiple times and multiple meetings, uh, yet still has not been provided. The same issue occurred with my request for the number of students who have withdrawn from the school district year over year. It's an essential data point for us to understand the enrollment trends and budget impact and also what we have, what we can learn from it. I requested this information early this year as well and again, multiple board meetings. The school district has never provided it. When data that is used and repeatedly withheld from the board, uh, it raises some concerns. How can we as a board fulfill our oversight responsibilities without assessing the information that guides that? without assessing the information that guides, that informs the school district decision? Right? Where is the accountability and transparency expected by our community? So growth measure provides evidence needed to understand the student progress within the school district and to evaluate whether our instructional program is helping students at all starting points. This is why growth data is essential. It provides the evidence needs to support the valid interpretations about student progress within our school district and also the impact of our instructional programs. Does anyone on the board have any further questions about the growth data? I think this is a good moment that we can talk about why student growth matters or maybe some of them feel like it doesn't in our school district.
I think for me, what really makes sense is that, you know, we're sitting here being asked to vote. We're voting on instructional progress, curriculum, developmental investments that we're making. So to your point, it should be correlated with the data, right? Are we making the right investment in the right development programs? Are they working? Are we succeeding? All of those things are critical. So I think the one thing that resonates with me is we are being asked to vote on things, so it's fair that we ask questions on the results of items that we're investing in collectively as board members and taxpayers.
I think it's absolutely valid that we ask questions. I think we have been asking questions. What I'm still stuck on is where is the data that shows that we are not showing improvement in our student academic progress? That's what I don't understand.
Yeah, I don't think we're asking to show where we're not showing improvement. I think we're asking to show how we can continue improving.
I mean, of course, I mean, why would you be in education if you didn't want to improve student progress?
And that data...
Of course that's possible, right?
It's being constantly reviewed, right? And then when the board asks, what percentage of students have low performing band increasing? About the medium, about the high, you know, we understand that. And then that will actually help us as a board to understand the question, why half of our third grader cannot read? Maybe they're making progress, but we're approaching to it.
You just made an assumption statement there, that half of our third graders can't read. I don't think that that is actually the case.
Cannot read at the grade level.
And we have 58.
Of 58, yes.
We have been provided with the data that shows that our students are growing year over year for many years of progress in both ELA and math and science as presented tonight, as presented in previous years. That is the data that is presented to the board showing us over and over again that our students continue to grow. In order for you to ask for specific data, as you continue to do, we would, all nine of us, need to come together and say that we, as a board, want Mrs. McLaughlin to provide that to us. And one board member does not dictate what is presented to the full board and to the public. Mrs. McLaughlin has done a phenomenal job in addressing many of your concerns. You've been giving a presentation last month on our student enrollment data, which was not required nor, but she went above and beyond to do so. And I thank her for that. I thank Mrs. Borland for her great presentation tonight about our student achievements and... That is all.
Okay, it sounds like you have the answer to my question. It's what's the year-over-year number of students who have withdrawn from our school district? If you have that, could you please share?
I have the same data that you were presenting with last month.
Last month, it's the student breakdown by each grade. It does not show, it has, Ms. Mary showed about each grade group number increasing for grade three, for example. But for each cohort, we have student transferring and we have student withdrawal, right? So that's part of the question, number of students withdrawn did not, was not answered. That's not addressed from the chart.
Can I add something? This is a public school district, I feel so having that information. I mean, there's so many variables, why families are moving in and out, lose jobs. Things like that. I mean, I think that's a really tricky thing to try to pinpoint. I don't know if that's feasible or fair because there are, again, there's a lot of variables for that.
It happens, and I want to just add one thing, because this is a common question. Is there a why that you asked that question? What is the why? Are you trying to say that the achievement isn't good here? Are you trying to say it's teachers, education, extracurricular? What is their reason? Because like most people come and go, I don't think anybody ever leaves. Please allow me to finish. I don't think anybody leaves this school because of the quality of the education or the future that it provides for the students. I'd say that's a safe bet. So that's why I want to know what the why is.
Sorry, just to add, because we did talk about this in ACI, and we don't ask the reason why. So we don't have that data.
I don't have a reason for the question.
When families come and go, we do not, as a district, ask why they go.
And to reiterate that, that is something that typically does not occur in public education.
I thought it was only to say, they're leaving or if they're leaving. But not like if they're just going to, or if they're upset with something.
They have to fill in the form and indicate which school they have to go. They test.
Right, so if they are transferring to another school, then that information, you know, we have to send their record somewhere, all of that would be known. But we need to educate the students that fall into Montgomery Township. We are a public school district. If they fall into Montgomery Township, they can come to the school district. If they choose to go somewhere else because they're moving or because of, you know, for any number of reasons, it does not matter. It does matter when you're a private school, why maybe students leave, enrollment drops. But this is a public school district. You live here, we educate you.
I'm just trying to understand that. You were trying to ask, they give you the presentation, the state versus what we are doing, or the levels and everything. But you want to go even deeper, that how each student or each group of student, if they're improved, how much they're improved?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
That's, it's just different level of understanding.
Because that, this state assessment is a summative information, provide a snapshot of that cohort at the end of one. We don't know their baseline, we don't know that. But some benchmark assessment, like Renaissance STAR, and right now we have this early birthday, we're assessing them three times a year. Then we can see how much they grow, right? We have a better understanding, our school district, we invest, we have great resource, great teachers, where we are. So what, I disagree with some of my board members on the perception of whether we should care about the student leaving, what we can learn from them, and whether that NJSL can provide already, can address the growth data. Because for me, as a second attrition, I can tell you that it is not. Because we don't, NJSA, they don't have common items across different grade levels to quitting them. But for benchmark assessment, that's the one. They have that, they track the student growths. And it's fine, that's a great discussion. We disagree with each other, I want to let the public know and see where we have different opinions and why I'm asking this question and why the board has a majority. They say that's good enough.
Thank you, Dr. Wang.
Okay, I have one more thing. So at our September board meeting, as I referenced college expectations and shared student center policy recommendations from multiple higher education faculty members whose expertise spans over business, medical, school psych, and special ed and STEM fields, administration responded three separate times by saying they apologized. That statement was deeply concerning. I want to be clear, as a board member, I did not receive an apology letter, emails, or communication from any of these faculty members, nor from any university officials. I do not know who they refers in Mary's statement or what exactly she claims they apologized for. If anything, it appears that attempt was made to undermine or invalidate the reputation of this higher education expert, individuals whose professional roles include preparing the very student we sent to their institutions, reaching out to the employers, and suggesting that their input was somehow inappropriate, does not align with responsible board leadership. I want to take a moment to thank this distinguished faculty members who generously shared their insights on what an effective STEM pathway can look like and what expectations they have for incoming freshmen. Their perspectives are not only shaped by working with local students, but also by teaching and researching at national and international levels. Their input broadens our understanding and elevates vision of what our school district can achieve. I also want to thank Montgomery teachers who shared their experience of feeling unprepared for the IPEL's implementation years ago. Their perspective reinforces what the NJSBA has long advised. Curriculum discussion approval should occur in the May, not just the weeks before a new school year begins. When these conversations happen too late, teachers are placed in a difficult position and district misses the opportunity to ensure thoughtful planning and professional readiness. Similarly, when the board is asked to prove a curriculum without assessing the necessary information, it puts the board in a position of voting in the dark. Meaningful oversight requires timely information. Without it, neither the board nor our educator can be fully prepared. And that undermines our accountability and the quality of instruction of our student deserve. As a board of at, our vision should always be higher, rooted in evidence, shaped by expert insight, and centered on the long-term success of our students. Dismissing or discrediting the very expert who helped define college readiness is not leadership. Listening to them, learning from them, and using their insights strengthens our school district. I think that's the standards our community deserves. And thank you.
Thank you again, Dr. Wang. There was no discussion there, but thank you for your commentary. Is there any other discussion from any members of the board? Hearing none, I motion to adjourn.
Is anyone going to correct the misinformation being commented on?
Well, I did not hear many of the comments that Dr. Wang claimed to have heard from our staff, faculty. I can say that I would have to go back and re-listen to it to see if I can actually agree with you, but I definitely did not hear them say anything. And as far as the faculty that...
They were parents.
They were parents.
But you're not parents.
No, they, now they're faculty. They're faculty, it's a higher ed, and they apparently needed your thanks and you provided it to them. They have not responded in any way to us ever since that. So I think it is old business at this point, we don't need to keep discussing it.
I don't think it's appropriate to reach out to their employer.
They've sent the emails from their business addresses. If I was to use my board email address and send an email to one of anyone, that would be completely and totally inappropriate and I shouldn't be called out for it. So, I mean, sometimes you need to take responsibility for your actions.
I think I disagree with you.
Okay.
We're going to agree to disagree on that?
Yeah, and I just want to go in the work of saying, no one was being called out. The higher ed institutions have reached out to say, we see that you have an issue with our pathways, can you please set up a meeting and come and discuss it with us? And they responded back, these professors are not speaking on behalf of the institution, we do not have an issue with your pathways. Thank you for reaching out.
So in summary, what Ms. McLaughlin is saying is, the university, she wanted to be sure that the university had an issue with what we were doing here, and they didn't. So we wanted to keep our standards up with them. And she was doing her due diligence to do that, and they used their school or email address. So what she did, I deem is correct. To kind of keep our relationship up with that school. Okay, so we're going to agree to disagree on that conversation. Is there any new discussion by the board? Okay, motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye. Any objections?
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out.